All right, I'd like to call today's meeting to order. Would you all stand and join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everybody here tonight. There are a few couple visitors that I'd like to announce as Mary Trent and Mario Rayo from Fee Insurance Company, so thank you two for joining us today. See you back there on the third row. Okay. Dodge City Community College Mission Statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. Like every other meeting, we offer remarks from the audience. If anybody would like to address the board, they can do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, are you looking for a motion of approval on both sets?
I would take one at a time, or both, whatever you would like to do.
I would move to approve both sets of minutes.
Second on approval of both sets of minutes. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Okay. I am operating tonight on a revised agenda. Carla, did everybody get the revised agenda?
Yes, they did.
Okay, good.
And the documents.
And the documents. Okay. We'll work on the completion of the agenda. So, item A, additions or deletions. There is an agenda, action item J, for the 2018-19 workers' comp insurance. Item B would be a revision to the consent agenda. Item 15 and 16, which you have the handouts for. And so, I would look to seek approval of the agendas as revised.
I'm going to approve.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agendas as revised. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next we'll move on to reports to the board. And first off, it would be the Student Government Association. Is Linda here? There you are. I did see you laying back there behind Jacob. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Lionel Mendez. As you can see, I am very excited and honored to be present today. For it is my very first board meeting today as the SGA president for the fall of 2018 and the spring of 2019. We're excited to announce that this summer, the advisor of SGA, Margarita Morales, and the new activities coordinator, Angie Estrada, and myself, we've been working on new events for the fall. We're planning to start our first week of classes by hosting a club fair so the students can start getting engaged and knowing about more of our clubs in the community college. We're also thinking about hosting... I mean, we're also wanting to start our new SGA elections. We're also thinking about doing like a kickball tournament or karaoke night, just to start off with some fun. And the SGA elections will be a week after that. So, we're gonna continue planning on more events and activities for the students so we can make our college a fun environment for everybody. I just can't wait to start sharing our progress with all over the college. And so far, I haven't heard many from the other clubs. I know for sure the International Club has been doing some volunteer work with their community. So, yeah, I can't just... I just can't wait to see what all of our students have and what all we are gonna come up with. And before, because that's pretty much all we have so far. Before I go, I'd like to share a quote by Henry Ford about leadership. It goes, "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is a progress, but working together is a success." So, as long as we come together, we stay together, and we work together, our college will keep being successful. Thank you guys, have a great day.
Linda, tell them one more thing. Tell them, what are you running for?
Running?
Also, Ms. Dot.
Oh, yes! I'm running for Ms. Dodge City Latina. It's our first year that they're doing it, because it's usually just Ms. Dodge City. And now they're doing the Dodge City Latina, so wish me luck.
Good luck!
So, yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Good luck, guys, have a great evening.
And best of luck to you.
Thank you so much!
Okay. Next up, we'll go to the trustees' report. So, Ms. Hampton, I would like to start with you.
I want to say that I considered our evening together last evening to be most beneficial in discussing some of the things that we're facing and planning for. I consider that time well-spent, and I believe that it was a very, very productive coming together. So, I really wanted to express that.
All right, thank you.
I really don't have a report other to say, other than to say, "I've missed you all, it's been so long since we've seen one another, and it's so good to see you and the staff after such a long absence."
All right. Glad to see you too. Likewise. I have nothing to report. Dr. Preston?
Nothing drastically new. I've heard a lot of good reports from, you know, more my professional front, that I get a lot of great feedback from the staff and the hospital and community clinics and facilities that I work in and around about our graduates, and the great improvement and the great progress and that our nursing program is performing. And so, I want to pass that along as a... You know, I always love to hear the good things. Sometimes we only hear the bad stuff. So, it's always nice to pass that along too and share that with everybody else. And I hope that work continues, and I expect it, fully expect it too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I attended our KACCT trustees' meetings in Kansas City. And the two days were about what we need to know to successfully navigate Higher Learning Commission, HLC, visits and reviews. And I thought, why now? You know, we just finished ours, but a lot of the community colleges are on the path just like we are. And phenomenal information to help trustees and timelines. Linda Fun, the executive director, was back and feeling really good. And we are financially stable in our organization, so that was good. And I will give to Carla what the handouts that I received so that you guys can have copies of all of it, because it is very, very good information.
And I don't have anything to report. Okay. Thank you all very much. I will say, I received kind of a comment from a person in the community about our meetings and televised and the audio levels seem to be very low. So, is there any way we can boost the audio up as it goes out? So, they can hear better?
Well, I know one time we were having issues with audio and it was on Cox's ear. I don't know if that's what the problem was, still or not.
Okay, I don't know. So, just a little bit of feedback there. So, okay. Next up, we'll move on to Ms. Killian with the RSVP. Last month, we said we thought it would be good to get an update and some understanding of your department, so welcome.
It'll take me just a minute here to get set up. Okay, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I am Lisa Killian. I'm the brand-new, as of 43 days ago, Director of RSVP. And just gonna kind of give you an overview and an update of what we're up to. Let me... So, RSVP is federally funded program. We receive our main funding from the Corporation for National and Community Service. And Dodge City Community College is considered the sponsor agency. And Dean Osmus serves as kind of the oversight sponsor of the program. We also receive funding from Ford County through the Mill Levy. And then we also receive a grant from United Way. So, what is RSVP? Retired Senior Volunteer Program. It was established nationally in 1971 and locally here in Dodge City in 1973. It engages citizens that are 55 and older. We build partnerships with community organizations to provide service opportunities that meet identified community needs as well as provide placement to suit the interests, skill, and time of the volunteer. Also operating within Ford County, RSVP is the Volunteer Center, which is designed for volunteers that are under the age of 55. So, here's a list of our advisory council. The federal grant through CNCS requires that we have an advisory council. The Board of Trustees, you all are responsible for program management and fiscal administration, and that again goes through Dean Osmus. But we are required to have an advisory council. And their duties are to advise and assist my staff and I with policy and procedure, to provide advice on how to most effectively use our volunteers. They help with volunteer recognition events. They review our grant applications and generally provide ideas and contacts for different volunteer stations. Also, Trustee Hampton is also an ex-officio member of the advisory council. So, CNCS has six different focus areas that the different RSVP stations can build their grants off of. So, we have disaster services, economic opportunity, education, environmental stewardship, healthy futures, and helping veterans and military families. We are just about to start the third year of our three-year grant. And that grant was written with a focus on healthy futures and the veterans and military families. So, that... Those two things are our primary focus with this grant cycle. We also, every year, work with Coach Phil Stevenson. He has his baseball team come out for a day of service. And they clean up yards or help with minor repairs on homes for the elderly or the handicapped people that might not be able to do that as well. And that's one thing that I would like to see expand. I've got some relationships with different people on campus, so I'd like to see what we could do to expand that service opportunity for our students here on campus. So, here's just a sampling of our different projects and services. Transportation is probably our primary service. We provide rides for people who may not have a way to get to the doctor in Garden City or go to Wichita. We've gone to Lakin, we've gone to Hayes. We've gone... We had a person who was in a home in Oklahoma, and she made her way on the bus. She was in the hospital, made her way on the bus to Wichita, and she lived in Ashland, but she didn't have any way to get back to Ashland. So, one of our drivers basically left in the middle of the night to go pick her up and got her back to Ashland. So, we have a very dedicated group of drivers that take care of people. We also have... Fall prevention is to help elderly people improve their balance and flexibility and strength. We have at Man or the Plains, a volunteer that does a fall prevention class to help people, even if they were to fall, help them learn how they can get up by themselves if nobody's there to help them. We also have volunteers that help deliver meals on wheels every day. And again, the fall cleanup day with the baseball team. Fire safety, I'm really proud of this one. We have worked with American Red Cross and the City of Dodge to provide and install free smoke alarms to Ford County residents. And we focused on mobile home parks and blight areas of Dodge. But anybody in Dodge City that is wanting a smoke alarm, our volunteers and the City of Dodge will go out and install those free of charge. The Red Cross's goal... The Red Cross in this area is a 60-county area, and their goal is 1,000 smoke alarms, and we've installed 383 of those. So, that's really something else. A few more of our projects and services. The Silver Tree at Christmas time. You may have seen trees around where you can donate gifts that are then wrapped and given to seniors that are in need within our community. It looks like I've got the fall cleanup day on there twice. It must have been really important. We also coordinate the Arts and Crafts Show at the mall for Dodge City Days. We set up all the tables, get the electricity to everyone, and then we manage that, and then we also clean up afterwards. We also have volunteers that help run the Three-I Show, and that takes a lot of volunteers to do that. And then, one more thing that we offer is the Yellow Dot and Cold Facts. Yellow Dot is a program where you can put your vital information in your glove box. And so, if you were in a car accident, the first responders would be able to go to that glove box and see if you were diabetic or what have you. And then Cold Facts is the same idea, but that information would be in the door of the refrigerator. So, they would know where to find out information on you if you weren't able to give that yourself. So, again, that's just a sampling of what we do. And here's some pictures of our volunteers doing what they do. So, CNCS also has National Days of Service, where they ask that the RSVP entities have a focus on giving back to the community. And one of those is Martin Luther King Day. And the way they say it is, it's a day on, not a day off. And the idea is to fulfill Dr. King's vision of a beloved community. We also have National Service Recognition Day. And that is, I'm not sure when, first Tuesday in April. And so, that's an opportunity. A lot of times, we'll try to get city, like the mayor and city commission and those kind of people to recognize the work that our volunteers do. And then, Senior Core Week is last week in April. And that's, again, a way to recognize our volunteers, but also to find opportunities for them to work within the community. The 9/11 Day of Remembrance is promoting community service. And then Veterans Day, of course, is to honor our veterans. And this Thursday, June 28th, from 3:00 to 5:00, we have our volunteer recognition. We... One of the big things that we do is, we like to recognize our volunteers for everything they do. So, we try to do that about twice a year. So, this time, we're gonna be up here in the cafeteria from 3:00 to 5:00 on Thursday. And we'll have door prizes and good food and just time to meet the volunteers and recognize them. So, if you're able to come, you're more than welcome to join us. And then, let's see, I think that's all I've got. Does anybody have any... Oh, I did want to say another... We are... I mentioned that I'd like to expand working with college students, helping them volunteer. I've also talked with Gail Osmus of United Way, possibly getting volunteers to go into the schools and read to students in the schools. And I'm also in the middle of becoming cert-trained to open up shelters in case of inclement weather. And I hope to expand that into more volunteer opportunities for our volunteers. And then, I've also spoken with some of the administrators of different retirement facilities to see what we can do to be of bigger impact in those places, so... Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks for your job.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Next up, we'll have Dean Lanning with Pell Grant Report.
So, I've laid in front of you information regarding Pell. I think it was requested before to provide some information regarding Pell Grants. Pell Grants are federal financial aid awarded to students that complete the FASFA, which is the Free Application for Federal Student Aid. And it's based on family income. Pell Grants do not have to be paid back. So, this is grants awarded to students based on income that they can use for college. And the amount varies too, based on the family income as well too. So, I've listed there the Pell Grant amount that students can earn a year, up to the maximum amount for the 18-19 year. It's gonna be $6,095. And that's to use for fall semester term, usually two terms. And then, I've listed there the amount that the college has received and has awarded to students. And if you can look on the 17-18 year, you know, we've already awarded $2.9 million worth of Pell Grant money. This is probably the largest group of money, amount of money that we award students is through the Pell Grants. So, and then, the information at the very bottom regarding our athletes and how much money that the athletes received in Pell Grants. So, any questions regarding Pell Grants?
On the Pell Grants, so this is the max they can receive. But what's the typical... Is there a range in there, and how does that work?
Yeah, they can receive... The maximum amount that they can receive in a year is the $6,095. Usually, the minimum amount is around $400. So, depending on the family's income, it's like a kind of a sliding scale. Income, and then the students are awarded the Pell Grant based on that.
Stephanie, do they have also now... We've got the year-round Pell now, don't we?
Yes, now, they've started the year-round Pell, where students can get... So, a college student has a 600% of financial aid. So, for their... Once a student has met the 600%, then they're no longer eligible for financial aid after that. So, basically, there's a calculation. Once they start taking out federal financial aid, that percentage calculation starts. Usually, a semester is considered at 50%. And so, they use up the money and then up to 600%. And they can use it year-round. So, students that were here in the fall and spring, they can come use Pell Grant money for the A star.
Where's the Pell Grant?
It is. From the federal government, yeah.
A lot of people don't school, couldn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for Stephanie? You have Dean Osmus's report in there. Ryan, did you have anything else you might want to add?
No, I do not.
Okay.
That's a good question.
And Jacob, you as well?
No, this is... We haven't heard on that.
Okay. Thank you all for your reports. We move on to board action items. So, we'll start with item A, 2018 Comprehensive Insurance Renewal. So, the insurance group.
Chairman Harshberger, I would like to request that we do A and then discuss that, which is our comprehensive insurance renewal, and then talk about action item J, which was just put on the schedule today.
Okay, we'll go to A then J.
Please. Okay, on our comprehensive insurance renewal, we... You can follow along when you're close. We are recommending... Okay. We're recommending the renewal of our comprehensive insurance package will be a 13% decrease from 2017. The total compensation insurance premium for 2018-2019 will be $205,151.32, which represents a 13% decrease from last year. So, I would like to recommend that we approve the renewal of the comprehensive insurance. Any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the renewal of comprehensive insurance?
I would move.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Then we'll move on to J.
Workers' Compensation for 2018-2019. I'm going to ask Mary Trent if she will come up. We had a discussion last night about this. And so, I think we need to have Mary explain. We're changing carriers, so I would like for her to explain what we're doing.
Okay. Chairman Harshberger, Dr. Olbig, trustees, it's good to see you again. You're right, it's just been that long since we've been together. So, on the workers' compensation situation, a year and a half ago, because of the flight program in Kansas, we were forced to move the workers' compensation coverage to Berkeley Risk Administrators, which is basically the pool for insurance for work comp in Kansas and Arizona. And it was because of the flight exposure that we had gone on with the helicopter program. That's what sent us there. Since that time, we're not currently flying in Kansas. And we were able to negotiate with the Accident Fund, who was your previous carrier, that they were willing to take back the exposure for Kansas. And we're anticipating seeing the savings in the $10,000 range on Kansas alone. That means we have to find a new home for Arizona also, and we have that in the works, but I don't have a final number for it. Our anticipation is that it will be no more than we're paying for Arizona at this time. So, basically, you should see at least a net savings over the next 12 months of about $10,000. This would get your workers' compensation back on its anniversary date, which is 7/1, which is really where we'd like for it to be. It also means that you only have to talk about insurance once a year. So, we'll just do all this at one time. But like I said, we don't have a firm number on Arizona. And so, we need you to help us tonight with it's okay to move forward subject to the recommendation that Veda made. Questions?
Questions for Mary?
Well, I think, Lucy, again, that we really didn't have... Excuse me. Reasons not to do this. So, I appreciate your presentation.
How much has the flight program added to workers' compensation?
More than $10,000. I can't... I didn't come prepared with that number, but more than $10,000 annually.
Around $25,000.
Okay. Because your standard work comp carriers just don't like that aviation exposure when you have students and employees, instructors that are in the air. The opportunity for something really ugly is just huge. Fortunately, we've never had that happen, but all they can see is what's the worst-case scenario.
Okay. Meaning more? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the work with this company that's presented?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
I'm excited about all this on the insurance, because...
I'm excited about all this on the insurance, because we saved $10,000 here and we're 13% down on the other insurance. I think we've done a good job with the insurance here.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now, we'll move back to item B, the sidewalk replacement project. Last night, we asked if there was a map for us to see, so.
Russ, it's coming down.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, Russ.
The map that you have in front of you is a map that was developed by my grounds, head grounds guy, at my request. And I took this and I presented it to Veda, and she chose zones 2, 3, and 4. And zone, or no, 2, 3, and 5, I wrote that down wrong on here. So Zone 2 is right in front of the admin building and also across the short, or that narrow green strip, and right there along where the trumpet vine is. And the Zone 3 is behind the admin building, and then Zone 5 is in front of the old Science and Math Building. This is the, primarily the unprotected part of the concrete. It's the ones that are outside of the overhangs. They're the ones who are the most cracked. In a couple of places, there are actually some trip hazards from where we've had upheaval in the past and where we have some pretty heavy cracks and stuff that are heaving up. We had what we thought was a general idea of what it would cost. All of the bids came in higher than expected. I was asked to go back to the low bidder. And I guess before I go there, what I should say is that the low bidder was half the price of the high bidder. And the high bidder and the low bidder, the only two that came to me, and we walked it and measured it, but they still came up with different square footages. I went back to J E G Construction and told him that, you know, this is higher than we thought it would be, what can we get for $25,000? And Dwayne Niebling was my contract tact. He said after talking with Jim Coffin, he said they would do the whole project in July, and we could pay $25,000 this year. And then next year, we could pay the balance, not to exceed $25,000. We may get some other, see some other areas that it makes sense to just go on like one more square or something like that. Or he's talked about, instead of stockpiling the old concrete that comes up, he was going to stockpile that out back behind the rodeo practice arena, so that we might use that to be crushed, to be used for fill and stuff like around the lake, or various other roadways. He told me he felt like that it would be better for them and better for us if they just took it back and crushed it, and maybe some of it came back to us, and we do have a place we could use some. So that is the bid, $25,000 this year, the balance of the $46,845 next year in July. And so that's what we're recommending. We thought it was kind of a no-brainer that we would go ahead and let somebody carry it, half of it for a year.
He's also the gentleman that donated the parking lot to the Student Activities Center, which is probably close to, I would say estimate about $100,000 worth of concrete for that. And wants to continue doing that.
Russ, I have a question. The stairs coming down into the campus off of this parking lot, have they been redone or is that on a plan in the future? If the public parks out there in those parking spaces out front, and then you come down and you're walking towards the Activity Center or the?
Oh, walking towards the Activity Center?
Yes.
We haven't thought that far ahead. The portions that we chose were the ones that were in the worst shape, and so we're trying to do that first. The ones up above there are generally in a little better shape. And we have some other small projects that we've got going on, because like between the Allied Health Building and the Science and Math Building, we've got a form out and we've excavated for putting in a slab so we can put in a dust stop shelter. It has been donated by the Office Plans and Professionals as they close out their budget. And we're also in the process currently of finishing up the landscaping around the new parking lot out by the Student Activity Center, where we will be planting a tree or two or more, and cleaning that out as well.
But trustees, I'm sorry, you're totally correct. We need to, we need to look at that, because I know exactly what you're talking about, and it's some cracked cement there. And it's, you know, part of it is, we need to be doing this preventative maintenance. And once it gets bad, it gets worse. And so part of it is, is we need to work on that.
Well, I like the idea of crushing the rock up and putting it around the pond, because you can see some of the lining in the pond there right now. So I like your plans here.
Well, part of the problem that we have with the lake out here is that when we get rain like we did this last weekend, it wants to overflow on the north end. And if we can get that built up a little better, maybe it won't overflow so much better.
So we're just going to do 2, 3, and 5 right now?
For now, yes.
And also, Dan, I'm gonna, I don't want to commit anymore at this time, because I haven't got finalized revenues. So I just don't want to commit more than $25,000. We may look at it mid-year, six months, see how we're doing on our budget, and then go ahead and commit another $25,000. But I just don't want to do that until I know how my revenues are going to come in.
Well, is it 2, 3, and 5 that's going to cost us $25 this year and $25 next year?
Yes.
Deferred payment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then how much will 1 and 4 going to cost? Do you have a bid on that?
I did not bid that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the sidewalk replacement project as presented?
I so moved.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Jeremy, Dr. Preston, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll move on to item C, 2018 Ram duly pickup.
Okay, I'll start off and then I'll turn it over to Ryan. This money that has become available is through the vocational capital outlay, and this is how much money we had left in the budget, and it has to be for capital projects, which the truck will fall under, and it has to be for the vocational side. So the request came in earlier on in the year that they desperately needed the pickup. So when I saw we had this extra money, I called Ryan and said, what kind of vehicle do you need over? And he then got in touch with.
Yeah, wait, Gabe, rodeo coach who also serves as our farm and ranch manager, actually.
So go ahead, you want to take it from here?
Yeah, I believe that the, Justin's here with us, so you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that the duly that we presently have to help coordinate those two programs with 2007, 2008, so it's an older vehicle at this point in time, it's served us very well, but over the last few months, we've been, we've started to get some mechanical issues with it. And then that, you know, Veda contacted me and said, hey, we've got some money in capital outlay, how can we use this, maybe look into getting a new pickup truck? And I was more than thrilled, so was Gabe, by the way. So with the age, number of miles, and once again, Justin can correct me if I'm wrong, there's probably, there's very few vehicles probably on campus that get as much use as that duly. It's used for all kinds of things. Check on our farm ground out at Coke, we've got some farm ground here north, of course, to move stock, things been to rodeos. So it gets a lot of, a lot, a lot, a lot of use. So the recommendation would be to move forward with that purchase. There should be several bids in your board packet. The one being recommended is, of course, through Lot Motors. But we think this is a great, great purchase, and we'll definitely get our money's worth as it relates to how that vehicle will be used.
Okay.
I move.
Motion to approve has been made, second by Mr. Malone. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move on to item D, the NAVEX Global Master Service Agreement.
Okay, thank you. This is the contract that we discussed to some extent in the boardwork session last night. And one of the things that we discussed there, we were asked to check on the terms of the agreement. You'll recall, it was originally a five-year agreement, and the suggestion was made that we could re-contact the company and see if they would consider a shorter term or putting parameters on the maximum of the increase. So this morning, I got ahold of Mike Webster, and we got in touch with the NAVEX partner that we were working with and negotiating. And they have agreed that they will go to a one-year annual renewable contract that would be mutually agreed upon by both parties. We have not got the new verbiage on that, the new clause that they'll send us. And so what I would suggest is that we approve the rest of the contract and the recommendation. Mr. Curbs will have some comments on that, because there's some limited warranties, things that he will need to bring to the board. But I think they've been very good to work with. They've made quite a few changes that Attorney Curbs requested, you can see that through the letters. And so we will probably get that verbiage and that clause tomorrow that will limit it to a one-year contract that we would then be mutually renew. However, they could not commit to a certain percentage of renewal, a limit on it. So what we will need to do is, we would get that each year and then determine if the cost was prohibitive or not. But I, other people that we spoke with, they were only seeing 1% to 2% cost per year. And I don't know, Scott had heard a bit any different, he's involved in this too. So I think I would recommend that we go ahead and look at that contingent upon that change and final approval with Mr. Curbs. But at this time, if I could turn it over to Glenn, you could talk about the limited warranty.
Well, as in almost every software contract we see, there's a limited warranty. I mean, it's very standard in the industry. And Bev is correct, this company's, as far as the software company, more agreeable to changing things than most companies we see. Most times, they just say, this is our contract, we've got the stuff, if you want it, then you're going to have to agree to it. But there's one provision, it has a disclaimer warranties provision, and by statute, the board has to specifically approve, understand that that's there, and approve the contract knowing it's there. The board's done it many times in the past, and so it's not an unusual thing, but it is something that you need to be aware of and something that you need to permanently do. So we're recommending that you approve the agreement even with that provision in it.
And the only other thing I would add is the first year cost is $3,250.
I think we might have been more concerned if you hadn't explained that you had visited with several people who are pleased with the services they had.
Right.
And it seems that it's a fairly trustworthy group, even though the caveat that we aren't sure about the experience, but it sounded, in our discussions last night, it sounded really, really good. So I think it's a good thing.
We didn't hear of anyone that, of our peer institutions or even universities, that are utilizing this company, of having any adverse experience, none.
This was one of our high points of the HLC report, and I think it's so important for us to move forward with something like this that will protect students, staff, others in our community if they need to visit with us. I appreciate that.
Will we, as a board, see the complaints, the tips, the, or will that just be an administration thing?
We'll be working with Mackenzie Wilfong.
Yes.
Who is a consultant that we have involved to set up what the process will be, and depending upon the type of complaint. But there will be a report generated of all of the complaints that will then be brought to the board on a regular basis.
Thank you.
So you would be able to see, like, for example, we're kind of doing it by hand, so to speak, now, since we are not utilizing a software. And so I am putting together the complaint report that was for this previous year, and then we will bring it to you in July, because we'll end it on June 30th. And so it'll show the type of complaint, how it was resolved, what the issue was, that kind of thing. And so this will kind of formalize it, where it'll be all in software, easier to track, that kind of thing. It'll have, you know, like, if a certain type of complaint needs to be answered according to our policy within 10 business days, then the software will remind you every day, you have three days left, you have two days left, that kind of thing. So I think it'll be very helpful there.
I definitely am interested in the reports, because ultimately, the responsibility is here at this table. And I would like to be fully informed, Bev, about the complaints, and so I hope we get more than annual reports after this software is up and running.
Right, after the software is up and running, we can do it on whatever regular intervals that you feel comfortable with.
Manual reports is too long.
But, yeah, so that we could have them relatively often, so that we could address issues, because we may have questions for you in executive session about some aspects of that report.
Sure, absolutely.
Great idea.
And then I think in reviewing the issues, I think there should be two to three people in the administration that review them at the same time.
Absolutely, yeah.
And this will help us with our HLC. Is Scott going to mention that at all?
Well, I mean, as I said last night, I mean, basically, the team thought this would be a real help to us. The people who have run it before have been very happy with the results. It's just some things come through and you can just easily dismiss them and send a nice response back, well, policy was followed, I'm very sorry you're upset, if you'd like to come and visit, we could talk to you. And sometimes they found out things that they were surprised that were going on that they were able to address, that had apparently been going on for years, but somebody reported it. It's like, oh, we're going to stop that, that's policy. So they are very, everyone I've talked to is very happy that we've used it, just because if somebody notices something, they can have this avenue to say something and feel very confident that it'll be addressed and it won't blow back on them.
But if we ask them to come in and visit with it, that sort of takes away the anonymity, right?
Well, there's a way for them to visit online, believe it or not.
Well, there's a way for them to visit online, believe it or not, where they can literally set an appointment and you can ask them questions, like a text, and they can answer back. And, you know, sometimes when it, when it looks like you're really addressing, you'd be surprised how many people will go ahead and come forward at that point because they feel like we're taking it seriously. But sometimes they will stay very nice, and that's fine too. No matter what, even if we get to the end and we made a determination, we follow policy and there's no grounds for this complaint, they get that response back. So it sounds like it goes in a black hole and they wonder what we thought. They know why we said no, and that's good too.
I just wanted to reiterate that I hope it doesn't, these complaints or whatever, tips, whatever you want to call them, don't just stop with administration, that they filter on down to the board.
There's HLC expectation that you would be informed of that, at least in summary or where appropriate in specifics. So I don't think there's anything wrong with you knowing about complaints. I mean, current policy includes that, so I don't think this would in any way replace current policy. It's just the mechanism to deliver that policy.
Our goal is to be as transparent as possible.
Yeah.
With everybody. It's amazing we have not had a policy like this or had a situation like this. I think it's very important for us to be very transparent and let you all know what's going on out there.
Agreed. This is a five, five-year agreement, which will give us time to assess the deal. And I'm glad you got that changed to the one.
Yes.
And so we can have a chance to review it and see if we want to continue. Once again, this was due, a suggestion from the HLC review team. And it's something that we've discussed before about having a whistle bowl program to give employees at the college the ability, if they see something wrong, that they can say so without fear of repercussions. And I think as we get this software and we start developing it, then I think, I think it's well understood how the board feels about seeing those, those items. And we'll make sure that, that, like President Nolte said, we'll be very transparent. And I think that will be an evolving process as we see what we have when we get into it. Fair statement?
Fair statement. And Andrew, we probably need to get that out for people to know it's out there and we can do the, how to get on the system and all that.
Glenn, you said you were fine with it, with that one deal with the, the provision? There's another comment that, okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the NAVEX Service Master Agreement for the college?
I so move.
Is there a second?
I said.
First, Jeanne. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Item E, the increase to the adjunct pay increase. Pay, yeah, pay rate, adjunct pay rate.
Good evening. This is to respectfully request the Board of Trustees approve an increase to adjunct rate of pay to $500 per credit hour. As you can see with the chart that you have in front of you or you were given last night, our current pay rate of 450 per credit hour is among the lowest of the state. We're competing with Seward for that, for that position. To increase the rate of pay to 500, to bring us, in keeping with Colby, Garden, and Northwest Tech, our sister institutions on this western portion or the best part of our great state of Kansas.
No, I think we need to stay competitive. We're going to get good people. Is there any questions for Dr. Palord? I have a couple, Terry. Anybody need one? All right, is there any, any further questions for Dr. Palord? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the pay increase for the adjunct.
So moved.
Is there a second? Terry was the first, you're the second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move up to the 1819 Board Meeting Calendar. These are the dates proposed, and the two changes would be earlier due to Thanksgiving and Christmas break, August 18 as well. So any comments or concerns with the, with the meeting schedule as presented?
Well, we do the best we can and we put it together again, so I'm going to accept.
Well, you can do, you can do. Okay, can I get approval, motion to approve the meeting calendar for next year? So, Dr. Presley first, Ms. Hampton second. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, next up, we have a memorandum of understanding for the Title IV Student Support Services Program.
Yes, so I would like to introduce Ms. Monica Kane. She is our Director of the Current Student Support Services Trio Grant. So tonight, we're bringing to the board the memorandum of understanding to continue working with the Ramona Muntzle and Associates Consulting Group. We are currently in the third year of a five-year grant for student support services. In the fourth year, we would like to rewrite this grant and hopefully get funded for another five years after 2020. Trio has several grants. Monica, if you want to add anything and.
You don't break?
Okay. Trio started back in 1965. Three Trio Grants were the initial ones, Educational Talent Search, Upward Bound, Student Support Services. These are federally funded grants from the Department of Ed. Basically, it brings a million dollars into the institution to provide services to our students. These are college students. Student Support Services works with college students, working with them on academic counseling, career counseling, financial aid counseling, personal counseling, tutoring assistance. So that's kind of the objective of the grant. The students that we serve in this grant are low-income, first-generation college students. The idea of Trio Grants is basically to help those first-generation college students who may not, even though they have the parental support for college, they may not, their parents may not understand the process and the things that go along with college and the years of college. So.
Are there any questions on that? I was going to say she covered, Stephanie did a wonderful job covering the overview. Do you have any specific questions on, do you like, would you like me to address some questions? I'd be more than happy to.
I'd like to see a spreadsheet of how the money is spent, what for, and.
I do have that. You did request that last night. Thanks, Monica.
Glad to have you. Glad to have, but do you, do you recommend?
You can. So this is, with this grant, every year, we do an annual performance report, basically summarizing the objectives that we met and how we've met those. And then also, it's, we basically get the money every year and we have to set in the budget of how we're going to spend the money.
Right. Every year, we have a program officer that has to approve this budget. So I work with Stephanie, Radeen Lanning, and we set up a budget for what educational services are going to help these students to succeed. And then that, that's not the end of it. Our program officer at the government has to approve it. And then once she's approved it, then we are well, we are able to spend that money. But that, that budget is not okayed until that program officer approves it.
And I've known several of your student tutors and it sounds like they do a great job.
Wonderful tutoring program.
It's a good program, I think.
AFC does a good job as well. The difference between our program and the AFC, AFC, we even use some of the same people. AFC sets a time, let's say this tutor will be at the AFC from 1:00 to 3:00. Then you have to meet your time for them. For us, it's one-on-one. If you can only meet at 6:00 on Mondays, we find someone that can meet with you at 6:00 on Mondays. So for the people that work, if you're in athletics, if you're, if you're a young mother, it works more with your time. So it's, anyway, it's just a one-on-one tutoring session where we're catering to your time, not you're catering to ours. Can I show you my objectives? We made our objectives. It is, it is quite a challenge to me to have at-risk kids and then to have that your at-risk kids make your goals is, I'm just so proud of all my people. And I do feel like they're, they're like my children. Even the pre-entry students, I feel, are still kind of like my children because you are helping them to become someone who they want to become, and you're helping them to reach their goals. So the fact that we have to have persistence and how we got these percentages, the Muntzle group, they did, we helped them to do a survey of our students. And then from that survey, this is how we got the percentages. And for persistence, the, from the survey, we're just supposed to meet 60%, and we met 89%. That means we retained more than our goal. Good academic standing, we only have to have 80%, only 80% have to have good 2.0 or higher, and we made 93, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses, is that a 93 or 98? 93. Graduate, I know.
Would you like my?
Yeah, I would just, we should just hold this. We're close. And then graduate, 39%. And it seems low for that, for me, even looking at that. But when you are talking with at-risk people, it is hard to get that concept of completion and follow-through. And we actually made 49%, which that is, I'm very proud of that. And then the transfer part of our program is, is extremely hard to get because people get comfortable in Dot City. And to get them to move on is a challenge. So 29% is the only thing that we have, again, according to the survey, that's our goal. And then we made 33%. So very, very proud of our people. Actually, Christie was one of our advisors and she got stolen away. She's a wonderful person. Right now, we have Kamala Blackwell and Celeste Corio. And wonderful people give, very giving, very caring. It's a hard concept to be caring but be demanding as well. It's, it's just a very rare quality that we have and that helped us to get these goals.
How many participants? It seems like you serve 144.
We serve 144. And then that's how the different things are divided up. That.
Is that, excuse me, is that limited to 144 or?
You can ask for more, and it also depends, there's a little formula in the sense that it depends on how many people that you're, like, if we were 20,000 student population, then you might want to have more in your, in your program. And then you'd have definitely more staff. An at-risk person takes a little more time. And usually, in the beginning, it's more time. Then as you are growing or as they are going to be a student, they take less of your time. But at the beginning, we call them touches. They come in and you get your, your academic counseling, oh, my gosh, the financial aid counseling alone, it's almost like stereo instructions to, to get financial aid anymore. It is just quite, quite extensive. So the touches that we get at the beginning are quite, they're more than as they get older.
Do you select the students or do they select you?
Okay, good question. I have to go and sell my program. I go to orientation to sell my program. I go to faculty to sell my program. As staff, bring people over, sometimes coaches bring them over. The best person to bring them over, I will have friends say, hey, this, this program really helped me out. I want you to meet my sister, or I want you to meet my best friend. That, to me, is the best recruiter I have is current students because they're saying that we're doing something right. Here, help my friend. And I have had several families, you know, like one, you get to, you get one person and then they bring their brother or sister. And so you have families as you keep going.
We do have to verify the first-generation, low-income piece of the, the students involved in the program.
That's why families are, because they all call, you know, they all seem to have the same qualifications. Yes.
But do we have any, would anyone, without word of mouth, other people at the college direct them to that happen?
Yes, and we also have a part on the website as well.
We attend the college orientation classes. All of our first incoming freshmen take college orientation. And different times throughout the semester, we'll go in and talk about different things. And one day, Student Support Services will go in and talk about the, the objectives of the grant and how we can help students that way.
The high schools, the area high schools, they also support this program, but their students.
One thing nice about that is when they, when there is a high school that has like the challenge search or upward bound, they do, they almost just guide them to the Student Support Services because they have helped them from the beginning.
All right, thank you, Monica.
Any questions?
No, thank you very much for preparing this information.
Sure. Thanks, Monica.
Okay. All right, Stephanie, then we have, also have a review from.
We've, you've had approved it, right?
Yes. I request that you approve.
I know, I know. But we also had a review of this MOU from Mr. Curbs.
Oh, yeah.
So, did you want to add anything or?
No.
The agreement may require approvals.
Do I have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Malone? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right, moving on to item H, the Oklahoma Department of Rehabilitative Services Agreement.
So this is an agreement that we've had with Oklahoma Department of Rehabilitative Services since 2013. Basically, what this agreement is, is it makes us a vendor of Oklahoma students that come to our institution, that receive services from this organization. And in, in turn, that we can charge, you know, send them the bill for the students that get their tuition or fees paid for through the Oklahoma Department of Rehabilitative Services. Usually, it's a two-year agreement and so in two years, I'll bring this back. But we usually get a student or two every year from, we get a lot of students from Oklahoma, but usually a few of them that get the services through the Department of Rehabilitation Services.
And then we had also reviewed the contract from Attorney Curbs.
Right, we had a concern and it was addressed to our satisfaction. It had a, it had provision and it's governed by Oklahoma law. And you cannot agree to a contract that is governed by any laws under the state of Kansas. And so we asked that it be deleted and Stephanie asked and they did.
Okay, now, the contract you reviewed, is this the one that we had in our book? Or is it different?
It's different. This is the final one.
This is the final?
Yes, the one, the, the final approved one.
All right, because I, I just, I had some questions.
Because I had a paragraph.
I could not find that paragraph.
It's gone.
Thank you. That explains it. Okay. All right, fair enough.
I did the same thing.
Do I have a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? That's right, sir. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. All right, item I. Laptop computers. Glenn, you have a.
Yes. Chairman Harshberger, Dr. Nolte, Board of Trustees, good evening once again. The recommendation before you is to add 14 laptop computers to our Adult Learning Center. Just very briefly, as a reminder, our Adult Learning Center is our facility on the east side of Dot City. It's located at 700 Avenue G. We run English as a second language and GED services through that facility. We run English as a second language and GED services through that facility. The GED services include both English and Spanish services. They run morning and evening classes. And on any given year, we can serve anywhere between 300 to upward of 500, 500 people. So very good service to the, to the community. What, about 90% of our programming there is probably geared towards the ESL students. And about 10%, Brandy will be here on Thursday to give you guys an overview, so she can give you a little better breakdown. But I believe about 10% of our population is GED. About 90% of that, those geared towards ESL. And what we see with our ESL population is a need for computer literacy because most, 99% of those are going to be first, first generation here in the United States. And in addition to a need to improve upon their reading, writing, speaking, and listening skills, there's also a need for computer literacy. Now, the Adult Learning Center does have a computer lab, but it's only fit for 10. And we're out of space to expand down there. There's just nowhere really to expand to or to add computers to that, to that room. So we're asking to add 14 laptops to help us alleviate some of those issues with not having enough access to, to the computers and helping those students improve upon their computer literacy. Any questions?
Do you have a way to, is there any other fiscal space in that building to remodel into a large computer lab or another computer lab?
That's a, that's a good question. We have remodeled a couple of different times. I don't want to say no, but I'd have to bring someone in other than myself to take a look to see how we could reconfigure things. But as of right now, we've got, there's probably about eight classes in that facility. And the largest area there is about this big. And that's where we do all of our orientation, and that's where the largest number of students fall within that intermediate category. And they completely fill that, fill that, fill that space. So there's just, there's not a whole lot of space, but it's possible to reconfigure a few things. But I'd need an engineer or, at the very least, Mr. McBe to come down there and help me, help me take a look to see what we, we could do. But at least as it sets right now, all the space is filled up with classroom and students. And then, the one computer lab we have, it's extremely small. It fits 10 computers, and there's no other way to really add to that unless we would blow out a wall. Then we would impede upon the classrooms that are on both sides of that. So...
Ryan, it'd be very helpful to have a board meeting there one night.
Yeah, I think that would be exceptional.
I would love to have, to show them what, what they do there because that's very impressive.
Yeah, absolutely. It's an exceptional, exceptional service to, to the community. And I, if they saw you guys come down there, they'd be great. We'd have to schedule it for when students are down there.
This is way too important to this community for us to drop the ball on, not push in the right direction, and not add some extra effort into to make it more successful than it is.
Excellent, thank you.
Ryan, can you speak, or is Brandy going to speak a little bit about the new focus toward work skills, workplace skills? That's in the new grant?
Yes, I think that's going to be probably the, she'll do a little overview of the operations, but I think she's going to focus on the tie-in with WEOWA NOW and workforce. Prior to some new legislation just passed within the year, there was workforce development, which obviously, we have on campus. And then, there was adult education, which is focused strictly on GED or improving upon English language skills. There's been some legislation passed, and it's now basically combined, combined those two, where we're not only preparing students as it relates to GED credentials and improving upon their English skills, but also trying to prepare them in some capacity for the workforce. So just moving beyond some of those basic skills, if you will, and giving them what they need to be successful beyond just obtaining the GED credential or improving upon their English language skills. So we're working on some pathways and some different things there. There's also going to be a significant amount of tie-in with Brandy and Jorge Estrella, our new ESL director here on campus. And actually, we'll be conducting a meeting next week. So there'll be a lot of crossover there, and those two programs working together to improve upon the services that we're providing for our, for our, for that population.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is this enough, will they use them in the, in the classrooms then?
Yeah, they'll use them in the classroom, yeah.
Is this enough to get you...
This will, we'll probably come back later. This will get us moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of the laptop computers, Adult Learning Center? These aren't from grant funds, correct?
Yeah, they'll be paid through, yeah, through grant funding, yes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, move on to item seven, unfinished business. There is none, so item eight, new business. First reading of board policy 515, Faculty Qualifications Policy.
This is not an action item. It's for the first reading of the Faculty Qualifications Policy, which is new, 515, which has been drafted in response to the HLC report that we received following your visit in April. The draft has been put together with input from Provost John, VP Tamey, Dean Ossmos, myself, and Dr. Cersei. Do you mind referring your question to C is our accreditation officer?
Do you have any questions about the policy?
Yes, why is there a difference in flight instructors and other types of professional training?
Yeah, that's a good question. We actually have reached out, went to what a lot of the schools are doing with flight because they're kind of the same situation as ours. It's kind of interesting because the federal government determines who gets to teach somebody how to fly an airplane. They've got a stringent, you know, there's medical qualification, there's a lot of testing, there's a whole lot of work that goes in to be an instructor pilot and maintaining that credential. And so, they're going to, if you've got one of those licenses, you can train somebody to fly an airplane. Question is, can we apply college credit to that? Are those qualified faculty? And we've taken, basically, we've copied what people have done in Saks, whatever, Riddle's done, a lot of other schools with this language, to try to say, because the federal government is licensing this person to teach this particular pedagogy in this particular fashion to this particular type of student, and we, we feel it's fine to attach credit to it the same way Embry-Riddle and other, other schools like us will do. So that's why they're set aside. It turns out that a lot of those people just literally never do go to school. They, they literally get out, and they get their pilot's license, and they fly all over, and then maybe they retire, and they instruct some, or maybe they instruct to bill their hours. And so, you're sort of in a situation where they, the number of people that have the flight instruction credential and even an associate's degree is fairly small, let alone a baccalaureate degree. There's just not very many of them. So that's why that one's separated out, just for that purpose.
Are they part-time or full-time?
They all be working as part-time adjuncts. And we've, we've made a commitment to HLC. The only courses they'll be teaching will be those courses that are the federally mandated courses for, for flight instruction they were attaching credit for. They won't be teaching anything else, but that what the federal government says they can teach.
Is, what is HLC? What is their position?
The visiting team thought that was appropriate. They thought it was reasonable to separate that one out for that reason, based upon that credential. And their argument is, it's got to be something that's seen as the industry standard for the exact qualification for that particular teaching. So these people are exactly who would normally train somebody to fly an airplane. And also, they say, it has to be continuous professional development and licensing, which there is. Those people have to go through retraining, they have to go through, they have to go through new medical exam, they have to pass new exams, take new training as part of maintaining that license. And so, that was the standard the team was comfortable with. And we understand by, that we can make a policy saying we recognize that, and we're okay. It's not uncommon in this particular area, and that's why flight is the one exemption we have out there to the rest of the policy.
How does that differ, though, from the policy goal of what we're trying to achieve? I don't, I mean, I understand that there's not many, not many skilled instructors in this area either. And our goal is to, if you're teaching at a college, you ought to be, have degrees. And I don't, I still don't understand the exception, or why, or how, what's the justification?
Well, it's, it's sort of an exception of saying that the only thing they're teaching, it's not really a classroom setting. When you take flight instruction, I mean, there's a couple of ground classes, but most of it is literally one-on-one, almost like a tutoring situation, where the instructor pilot's in the plane, and the student pilot is in the plane, or the rotorcraft, and they're out there flying around doing one-on-one instruction. And it's different than a faculty member. They don't really service faculty members. It's more of almost an adjunct for that purpose. And the program is, you get your license, we attach credit to it. Then you also get core courses and elective added to it. And we assemble that as an associate's degree. It's different than a program where the faculty is the lead person who walks on campus and has students all day long. And that's sort of the separation in my mind, whether, and a lot of other people will, will accept that. It's questionable whether you accept it.
It's almost like a certificate. You know, certificate you have, it's, you know, if it's transferable, that's different. If it's an associate's degree, it's, that's transferable. This is more like a certificate to a certain extent. That's how, how I kind of understood it to be.
A certificate that meets federal standards?
Right.
Yeah.
A certificate that meets federal standards?
Still seems to be contrary to the goal that we're trying to reach. Because what difference does it make, whether it's a certificate if we want faculty who are educated to teach students?
No, I wouldn't understand that. I would say, I'd say we're not alone in making this exception, but I understand your exception too. You know what I mean? I understand what you're saying.
I think I mentioned this before, but if we've had, if I'd had the opportunity to write that third paragraph, "Faculty teaching in career and technical education college level certificate, an occupational associate's degree program should hold a bachelor's degree in the field and/or a combination of education," I would have added satisfactory teaching experience, training, and tested experience. I would have added satisfactory teaching experience in there.
Well, as you say, this, this is not something we had to write. We didn't have an option to write this either. This is, that HLC language. I understand your point, too. I have argued with them, too.
Add that in.
Yeah.
Please don't.
Please don't.
I'm sure they will add that.
I'm sure they're right here, right?
That can get us in a lot more trouble now than...
I'm sure they'll add that in there.
Go on probation.
I'm going to ask you a totally unfair question, Scott.
Sure.
You're probably not going to be able to answer it off the top of your head. If you are, I'm really impressed. Can you go out and/or find the answer for us as to our current flight instructor program, the service we're contracting with currently, slash the service that we're looking to contract with going forward, as to what their, their training, like their pilots, their educational pilots, what their bachelor's rates are or degree holding rates are? Just for education.
I think we could get that. We'd have to ask Dr. John, but I think what we had before was sort of a situation where we said we were going to put them on plans. They agreed to be on plans, and the compliance rate was exceedingly low. And so, as a result, they would just cycle out and then go work for somebody else. And so, it was literally a rotating door. People saying, "Yeah, I'll agree." Because by the time you catch me not being in compliance, I have got some hours, and I can move on to something else.
I was just wondering how, I mean, it'd be interesting to see the number.
We could ask him. I suspect it's low.
That's a good question. We ask them, and that's what they provide us. It's, it's, it's tough to get them to do that because most of them, that's what they're doing. It's kind of like a certificate. It is a certificate with federal mandates. And that's, that's what our new provider will, will probably say. Because I think, Adam asked him that.
And I think the strategy before by the previous provider was not near as forthright as what we have now. That shouldn't be a surprise to anybody.
I think one of the tough things is the difference is we're discussing our college accreditation, our college standard, what we're providing in college education in a conflicting field that you can, you don't, you don't have to have a college education to get a pilot's license.
Right.
And/or some of these certificates. You don't have to go through a college to do that unless you want some certain people to pay for it. That's the stipulation there. And so, the difference is, you can go be a pilot without a college involved at all. You can go pay a program and go get a degree that has nothing to do with higher learning commission accreditation. We have to figure out how to maintain our standard and meet those requirements laid out by that accreditation body, so...
And we, we have reason to believe that this will pass HLC muster. And we're going to show this to them.
In August?
In August. And we, we expect from what we've talked to our liaison from the HLC staffers, who we've talked to, shown to her, we think they're okay with this. They're okay with these very specific, tailored, very thoughtful exceptions to what they would all otherwise call standard. But that's because they're basically, they call it equivalent experience of saying, "Look, if you were to have a bachelor's in aviation, the skills you would get, the training you would undergo, the license you would have would be materially the same as the person you hire that we would be hiring." It's very non-liberal, aren't we, about that?
Welcome to accreditation. And, and there's other states, like Southern Association is a lot more, is a lot tougher. Matter of fact, Bell Wieland, which is the president for the Southern Association, has gone against governors and said, "I make the rules, you, you, you follow them," that kind of thing.
It's just a different stripe on the same zebra. All it is.
Okay. All right, this is the...
I mean, I'd like to also acknowledge Counsel Curbs, assistants, and guidance in preparing the draft as well.
Like I said, this is the first reading of this policy. And as, as you all remember, this was a required item from HLC's visits. So we will look at this next order. Okay, thank you.
All right, the consent agenda was revised. I look to a motion to approve the items and the consent agenda as revised. Do I have a motion?
I so moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion?
I'd like to take some items off for discussion. Item seven...
Can't do that.
Can't do it?
You already proved, approved the consent agenda. I did that at first.
If we're going under rules, if we are going to make a change to the consent agenda, we have to do it at the front, front end.
I just wanted to discuss some questions.
All right. Did I have a second, Jeremy? Would you agree? First was from trustee Malone, correct? And then, the second from Jeremy? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? All right. I believe that is it for today's agenda. There is no executive session. And we will be adjourned. Thank you all very much, and see you Thursday at 6:00.